Tonight's study session, at the last study session, you had asked the city team to provide some more information about DEI initiatives and what our surrounding communities have started to do as it relates to DEI, including the formation of any community task force or committees and their roles. You also asked for resources on local DEI consultants, along with examples of scope of work. So we have provided that information that you requested, and it is available to you as part of the study session materials that were given to you in advance, and you have copies of that here as well.
Hi, sorry.
Oh, good for you. And then regarding the purpose for this evening, as is stated in, in the overview that you have in front of you, we have, we have noted that throughout your discussions, the general feedback that we're receiving has been that you have an interest in focusing DEI internally on our city services, and how we can work to improve the delivery of those services to our community with these DEI plans. So tonight, we're going to ask that you, of course, discuss and determine the direction you prefer on whether to hire an outside consultant and/or recruit an external DEI task force for that purpose of helping us to improve our city services. So as you know, the study session format is informal, it's your discussion, it's your decision. We have the team members here for you. If you, if you'd like to hear any comments or feedback or recommendations that we may have, we're certainly open to that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we basically have two questions to deal with tonight. First is, do we want to have an outside consultant, first of all, and secondly, do we want to have a DEI task force? So opening it up for people's thoughts.
I have a real quick question on that. The consultants, can you call out? When we put out the last bid, did any of these bid on it?
Yes, one of them.
One did. If we do put it back out again, can we make sure that they're all like notified that there's a bid out there?
Yes.
Okay.
Can we legally specify that we're looking for an in-state consultant?
It's a permissible way to, it can be one of our requirements, and so it's, it's fine.
Yeah. I would, I would be supportive of that. I mean, the closer to Arvada we get, or at least somebody who has knowledge of this historical area and has worked in this historical area, to me, would be important, particularly in light of maybe any relations with Native American history and, you know, going back to the early 20th century in this community, just that general knowledge could be great in helping us sort of work through these processes with our communities.
So what do people see as the advantages of having a consultant versus just doing it internal?
So my sense to a consultant actually goes back to one of the debates we were having this week, in fact, with the city manager hiring process, is do you need those, those fresh eyes? Do you want somebody to come in, take a look at the systems that are in place, and be able to diagnose something that maybe all of us don't see because we're already in the system, we're already so acclimated to it, we've been, we're not aware of our own blind spots, truth be told. So that's my sense of the value of an external consultant, is being able to come in and help show us where our blind spots are, simply because we're, in the words of Donald Rumsfeld, we don't know what we don't know.
Others, is what I said.
The last place. Oh, I was on the plane the last time, sorry.
Are we thinking of a consultant and having a citizens task force, or is this?
This could be an either-or, or it could be an and/or it could be an or.
Isn't that the presence I have from the?
And it could be over time.
It could be over time, too.
Step fixed.
To that question, I would advocate for both, and the reasoning is I really feel that, you know, the outside eye's perspective is really important that Lauren spoke to, but then being able to tap into our community and get their feedback and inputs, I think, is also an integral part, and I don't.
The inside eyes.
I, I think you need both to get it really thorough and ask us.
Is, is it your thought that the consultant can help us craft what that committee possibly looks like?
Absolutely.
As opposed to us trying to figure out who and what and why?
Absolutely. We're not the experts.
Yeah, in fact, I would, if, if that's the direction folks wanted, like, kind of like to get a consultant first, and then have them help us develop what's the right task force. Does that make sense to people in terms of?
Oh, I was going to say that, just a little flavor to it. I think that, total absolute first, I agree. But I also think stakeholder engagement before we figure out a committee. Like, actually just, what is that stakeholder engagement? What does it look like? Could it be used like we do in our CIP groups and stuff? Get a small group in here to kind of help through the process? One of the outcomes could be a committee, like one that's standing forever, but I think there should be a development portion of that before we commit to an outcome.
Part of the consultant role, though, would be developing stakeholder engagement plans, I think, as best practice for these certain demographics of these cultural identities, so.
Well, I don't want to, I don't think we should just come out and say consultant and committee. You know, I, I think that we should have a consultant with stakeholder engagement, and then let them, let them come back with recommendations.
Yeah, yeah.
So I was, yeah, and I would probably tend to agree. I was looking at Eagle Woods. And that's similar to how they approached it, was they hired a consultant and then they had stakeholder engagement, but then, I don't know if it generated a committee or not, but that's, you know, again, the stakeholders obviously will help provide insight, for sure.
And my sense is we can do the, definitely the consultant first to help us inform, because we don't want to rush, you know, I don't want to say blind, that's the wrong word, but we don't want to just do things. We want to do things in a very thoughtful way, in a very informed way. So consultant first, with stakeholder engagement, and they're the experts on that, and we can even say to them, one of our beliefs was that we should form a committee to help with this, and then let them lead us on that.
Agreed.
Where would that funding come from?
Great question.
Come from city council pages.
Playground.
So how many rounds of my pageant?
Yeah.
There we go.
We would have to, if we estimate the cost to be in, in our budget, and, you know, I think we can find ways to do that.
But how was the last consultant was on, did we have money like earmarked in that, or did we have a money set up?
We did, we did.
That's a merit.
Yes.
A dollar.
We still have money.
Okay. Sorry, I'm sorry. So a little question I would have is, I'm fine with engaging a consultant, I think engaging a consultant first is, is absolutely the right, the right process to go by. I, I would want to make sure we keep in mind that the consultant work may lead to no task force or no committee also. I don't think we should make this a foregone conclusion that, that we're going to do that, because if, if that's our foregone conclusion that we're going to have a consultant, and then we're going to have a task force for a temporary period of time or a committee forever, I'm not sure why we would do, why we would spend the money on a consultant to do that.
Well, that's why I say, we, we say we've, this has been an idea we have considered heavily, and then we let them guide us on this, to see what their recommendation is.
With the understanding that I think we want stakeholder engagement as part of the process.
Yes.
So however, shape, or form the stakeholder engagement takes, we are, we are directing the consultant to include a stakeholder engagement process and advise us on how that should be shaped or formed. Is that?
So let me finish my, my second point, which was, I think we've agreed to somewhat of a limited scope of this. You know, we've talked about, you know, our internal organization and people should, the way they're hired, the way they advance in the organization, we, you know, should make sure we're good on that, and then the places we touch are customers and citizens, so everybody should have equal access to a building permit or paying a water bill, or, you know, those, those types of things. How do we go about limiting a consultant? So, you know, I, I think that if we're going to hire a consultant, the most important thing we need to do is give them instructions. Here's what we're hiring you for, not just, here's a hundred thousand dollars, do whatever you want, it needs to be, here's, here's your task. So how do we go about kind of?
Scope of work.
Given, given them a, a scope of work that's, that's equivalent to what we've kind of talked about.
And we can even put in a statement, you know, we don't expect this consultant to come in and fix all of the diversity, equity, and inclusion issues within the confines of the city limits of our.
Yeah. And I think these six bullets that the staff has outlined, I think they're a really good guidebook for that.
And, and, you know, given the, the importance, and I would also say sensitively, this, we can, we can make sure that, which is not something we normally do, but we can also make sure that we run the scope of work by all of you before we let it out.
So, scope of work, do we have like phases or task orders underneath it?
I think you have to.
Yeah.
Deliverables.
Yeah. The, the first one I would say is, let's go, let's go interview, you know.
Start with HR.
Right, and then, you know, bloom out from there, and then, and then, and then come back and say, okay, through our interview process, our stakeholder engagement, these are the steps we got to tease out more. Do you agree that's the second task order, if we agreed to what they found on the first task order? Does that make sense? So we can kind of see, because I agree with John, it can just, it can just explode to, to something that it's a forever project.
Well, and you engage a consultant that's a specialist in this, the chances of them coming and saying, well, we honestly didn't find much of an issue, so we're done here, thank you, have a nice day, it's much more likely that they're like, oh, expand, this thing, this thing is a scope creep, a mission creep, expands, and, you know, if you let the people who are being paid to do this work write their own scope, they are going to write bigger.
Yeah, but I think if they come back and say, here are the findings, we can decide at that point.
Yeah.
Are those, do we let staff and the team figure out the validity of that, and so we go after it?
Yeah, I think that's fine, or just some type of limiting.
There needs to be a checkpoint.
But I think those checkpoints are maybe critical to build in, because if, you know, if we can't clear a hurdle, to John's point, if we can't clear a hurdle, then, then maybe we had our definition of what we wanted them to do wrong.
Yeah.
Right, and so maybe we have to look at, we, it, this has to be, it might be pretty fluid.
Yeah.
And, and making sure that, you know, we're not just paying them some number to come back and say, well, here, we're going to fix all the problems in the world, and.
It goes back to.
A low, low price of.
Yeah, it goes back to, we don't know what we don't know, was just that, because I don't want to create a scope on something we think we know. I'd rather try to create a scope that they come back and say, okay, yeah, you didn't know what you didn't know, but here's what we found out, and now we can figure out these two of the conversations.
Yeah, I like that.
Because I have no idea what's going to clear the scope, if we don't know what we don't know.
I agree, we get, we get that initial wave of findings, and then it's up to us and the city team to qualify it, and see which, which rabbit holes, then we're like, okay, these seem like the objections and the next steps we need to take in order to take meaningful action on a finding. And it's up to us to determine that at that time. I like the idea of benchmarks and pursuable action points, as opposed to just writing a blank check. I don't think that's what anyone's asking for.
Well, deliverables.
Yeah.
I want to see deliverables on that, because I want to see like a needle move. If, if there's something that's been identified, we should be able to see a needle move. I, I think the, if the scope's too wide, I don't think we'll ever see the needle move.
Yeah, I agree with Randy, that the bullet points that the city teams come up with here, I think give us some good parameters for.
For the initial.
The one that I would add to is the last one, is that looks internally at our budget as far as the, you know, the money we're putting out in different services and programs. And I would also suggest that we include our revenue coming in as well. So are there businesses that aren't coming to Arvada, why is that? Are there customers that aren't coming to Arvada, why is that? To be asking those questions. So it should be both the revenue as well as expanded search questions.
I'm assuming, I don't know, Lori, or Linda, or Mark, I'm assuming our procurement practices include like better-known, small business, minority-owned, do we have roles around that procurement practices?
Sure we do. Why wouldn't we?
It depends on the funding.
Right.
So there are some sources of funding that do require us to have those types of provisions in our agreement, but I'd have to check on, I, I would know the percentage of our procurement practices that do back tap those.
That's the problem with like federal grant money, and it could even be state grant money, is they give you money, but then they require of you something that costs more than the money they give you, and you just go backwards, you know.
Yeah, I mean, there's some positive around it, doesn't mean it has to be exactly how the feds do it, but there, there should be a preference of scoring or something to that effect, and not restrict our money, but, you know, I think there's an opportunity for small business and minority-owned businesses.
Right, just like there's that better hiring preference of, you know.
I want to look at this pretty carefully. Yeah, I'd say, to me, that's a big step to say, now the city's going to undertake preferential contracting, preferential hiring, preferential anything, as like, you know, the object of this whole DEI thing is to kind of wipe the preferences away, not to just create different preferences.
Because you think the purpose is equity?
Yeah.
Would equity come maybe helping some of the.
I don't see that as always equitable.
And I'm a victim of, of the era where there were quotas to get into law school, you know, and, you know, I had to score a lot higher to be able to get in, and so my classmates said, it just doesn't seem.
Well, a lot of those classmates worked harder and had a lot more barriers than some traditional demographics.
Didn't have generational wealth, complete as an assumption.
Yeah. Well, I didn't have generational wealth, I had student loans, which I paid off and are being forgiven, but that's a whole nother discussion.
So I would, I would submit this as why we need a consultant.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
I totally agree.
Taking a rabbit hole, but that was an option of a discussion of an hour, and that could happen.
Right, right.
And, and I didn't want to lose, I mean, I appreciate your addition, but my point was, when we were looking at the incorporate DEI into the budget, looking at both the revenue as well as expenses, and that was my.
That's, that's fine.
Just looking at, yeah. The, the question I'd have is, as we go to contract for a consultant to help us with this, how do we, how do we have a consultant that has kind of the diversity of voices that we have around the table? Because it seems to me that if you're a DEI consultant, you're coming at this from a, there's a problem, and we're the problem solvers, and here's.
I feel like that's a very loaded assumption. I feel like these, I mean, it's kind of like saying a psychologist is always going to find you have a mental illness, that's not true. I think the general idea is this is somebody with a trained expertise in a specific subject, which none of us have, so we're going to rely upon somebody with that trained expertise. Now, yes, they, they likely are going to find something somewhere, because we're a large organization, and there's always something somewhere in a large organization, doesn't matter what you're looking for. So that said, I don't think they're just going to be like, oh, this is that. Like, these are trained professionals that have been doing this work for a long time, we should go in with an assumption of respect, and it's up to us, again, to study those findings and take what we want and then pursue them.
I think it'll be, you know, evident in the responses we get to whatever it is we put out there, if it's not here, whatever, as to kind of what, kind of where they're coming from. I, I went through and looked at all of the Colorado ones that were noted on the paper. By the way, one of them has nothing to do with DEI, it's all environmental, unless I missed something.
Yeah, I had Deloitte get on there.
Well, Deloitte, but if you look at it, it's pretty interesting, they've got a pretty diverse DEI group.
In college.
So those consultants are starting to play DEI in their consulting.
Yeah.
And transportation side is playing DEI, and they're, a lot of our consultants now.
Really?
But I would just like to say, check those, because the other one was a membership organization that didn't appear to provide consulting, you just joined the membership. So, but I think, to John's point, I think that that's, you know, we're going to get some responses back, and it would, it'll be interesting to get the team's take on kind of how those score in their rubric, with regard to.
I'm used to that.
With regard to.
We'll use a rubric.
With regard to how, you know.
Yeah, we need to do a state.
I have a follow-up question to that. This is directed to staff, so GARE, which is what's the acronym for?
CARE.
CARE, sorry.
Government Alliance on Racial Equity.
So we have a relationship with them already established, and we have used those resources already in, what I understand, some of the internal work that the city has done. Is there a role, and what could that role potentially be for GARE as we're talking about consultants and all of this? I, I'm not that familiar with this, I need to be educated, I guess.
Sure. We, we can look at that, at what role they could play.
Okay.
We've, we've had, I'm just, frankly, we've had good experiences, and then once we need to direct differently, so they're in a solid organization, but like a mini partnership. Want to go into that eyes wide open.
Okay, fair enough.
But yeah, great, great point made. So if you are hiring a consultant to develop scope of work with these six points and your additional point, to, and then take their recommendations with the stakeholder engagement that they recommend, to then decide if we want to have an external task force?
Or whatever actions are out there, especially city.
Yeah.
Maybe see what those, those blind spots or rabbit holes are, and then we can narrow their scope down and address those rabbit holes, and, and create actions around those, just deliver on those, because if, if they come back and they said there's 60 of them, as we know with our CIP list, we can't ever get them all done. But if we say, here are the five we want you to tackle right now, because they seem to be the most important, then we can do bite-sized task orders and milestones to achieve what we feel are the right scope.
And they might come back with a recommendation that a task force can help us achieve that.
Yeah, faster, fewer, cheaper.
Exactly, and so, yeah, I agree, I like this. Bob, you said it well.
Okay. Ms. Gillis, I bet you're going to be the one who develops the deadlines and timeframe for this, so.
I would imagine.
We will.
Right, and I just want to share one other thing, I mean, this is your discussion, but I believe the team will learn a lot by having this consultant, and it will be an opportunity to see through different eyes. So it's, when we talk about a price or how this all works, I do think that there's that indirect cost benefit that will help us all as we go through it. So yes, I can bring back my partner, Kramer, some, some dates on what we think is reasonable. Excellent.
But I would just say, going through and looking at several of these companies that have been identified, and looking at their scopes of work, I think you're absolutely right. I think it'll, it'll kind of shed a new light on, on what's real and what's possible, that then, I think, hopefully can be actionable, right? That's the whole idea of this, is to have an actionable plan to ensure that our citizens have access to service, and our employees are taking care of us, for lack of a better way of saying that.
Do we have a dollar amount or range that we want to limit this consultant to, or, like, how do we do these things? Do we just say, here's what we're looking for, tell us what you would charge us to do that?
Yeah.
And then we decide to go or not go, or do we say, how much can you do for X amount of money?
Well, I think in previous solicitations, we have put a price range.
We have, we can also do this solicitation in a way that says, provide levels of scope of work, and price it at that way, so.
So you sort of have a menu to pick from?
Correct.
Well, they should also know that there could be a space, too, after the findings are found and presented, that there's a potential task force or where you want to call for, 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 yeah, to action, so. I, I hate big dollar numbers. I'd rather just see what they submit, and, you know, you guys decide. I went to lowest quote, I went to who eats.
I believe we have some flexibility on consultants, correct?
We do. We don't, we're not required to pay the loan.
Right. But if they came back with $500,000, would we just say, okay?
I don't know.
That's what I'm asking about, about, if you have any kind of concept of.
Because if you tell them the dollar number, you say, oh, we're all at the dollar mark.
Well, sure.
So I can't speak for the future city manager, but this city manager would not bring back one of those $500,000.
But yeah, I think one of it's scope.
Yeah, as long as the scope is written clearly, they're going to come back with some number, and then we'll be able to, and if it's, I can't imagine it's going to be that much, but even if it was close to what we had in the original, right, conversation, that, you know, we can then scale from there and say, okay, what if we were to remove this now in phase one? You know, and to this point, we're going to phase this over some period of time or whatever it may be, I don't know. But yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't put in a dollar value, I'd let them come with their scope of services and their pieces of service.
I also want to see that recommendation, I mean, that's part of how you choose your contractor, you see who's come up with a really good proposal, and whose proposal is speaking to the needs that you've laid out.
References.
Yeah.
The difference, I get that, like, if you're contracting to have a kitchen floor put in or something, everybody's bidding on the same thing, but this is so kind of amorphous, it's hard, you know. This isn't very nailed down for exactly what they're going to do and how they're going to do it, and I, I mean, maybe it's.
I think we're going to be able to.
If we lose the scope of work, I think you'll, that's your opportunity.
But again, I think, and I'm only saying this because I looked at some of the websites here, there are some, I think, John, to your point, are kind of high in the sky, but there are others that have very kind of detailed actions, and it's clear who has and hasn't worked in government. And so I think that's the other kind of betting gate that we need to make sure that, you know.
Also, in terms of, there's a network of local governments, just here in the Devermento area, that David was working on, David mentioned Eaglewood, so we can utilize their experience and what they have gone through as a way of further, based on the discussion here, not further refining what we're looking for.
How long will it take to develop an RFP?
I, two years.
Well, we kind of have to be ready thinking now. Didn't we already pull one out, so we would just be changing out some of the scope and see what we should take?
We'll, we'll not take that one.
Well, developing it, then you got to post it, right, got to weigh the score and then everything else, and that's where Monster could get in.
And what, I think there's, to the question of what our role is going to be in those different stats, given how the first RFP went, I would guess we want to have a lot more.
Yes.
I think that's right.
I would agree with that.
Well, and I, doggone it, I wish we had instituted these study sessions before.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, you know.
But I think that might have been one of the positive outtakes of that negative experience, is that something like this has come together, which is great.
And the format was so much better.
Yeah, I don't see that, that previous is negative, but oh, I'm afraid if we had thrown $100,000 to them, there would have been so much dissatisfaction, I think we'd be just starting over, and maybe starting over from a worse place.
Yeah.
I'm not so sure that was, I'm not so sure that was a failure.
Well, what I would call it actually is a learning, and, and I know that after that, Matt and I had several discussions, and one of the discussions we had was that other communities have, have had the same experiences, that you bring something together and it just doesn't, just doesn't fit, and you have to rework it, which is what we're doing right now.
Yep.
So, so do we want all of us to help with the scope, or look at whatever structure you do, or should we just say two or three of?
I think we have a team come up with a structure, but.
First cut, and then submit it to all of us.
Am I supposed to look this way?
We don't.
Look anywhere, anywhere you can want.
Well, not only you, and you're looking at her, so.
Well, because we're trying to make sure we're really super on, super, super on the same page here.
Basically, you, what do you think, Lori?
I'm sure that Mark and I agree. We will, we would like to draft something up together to cover, I mean, I, you've provided, we heard it. So if we can crack something and maybe share it in the weekly to see where we're at, if we're way off, maybe another study session is needed, if there's some just adjustments, we can get that faster and keep it moving.
Can I just comment, it's just the business terms, not the whole contractor's scope of work, just like kind of what?
Of course.
Because there's, I know there's so much other.
No, I.
I want to read.
Just the two pages, just the two pages.
That sounds great.
Yeah, yeah. Otherwise, I mean.
All right, we got it.
Okay. Anything else, folks, what is, is on this?
I, I just want to say, I mean, I appreciate the conversations we've had on this, I really appreciate the staff work on this, and discussing this, this was extremely helpful, and there appreciate the staff work on this, and concerning this, this was extremely helpful, and there was a lot of work into kind of digging up some of these pieces, and I did look through all of it, and I just, you know, the scope of work examples I requested, I really appreciate that, and some of them are helpful. I just think, you know, is, we want to be a welcoming community in Arvada, and I think to do that, we have to be willing to ask some of these tough questions, and have these tough conversations. And so I really feel like, you know, having the consultant, doing the stakeholder work, and making sure that we are engaging our community in this conversation is so crucial to asking those tough questions. And I just finished by, I'm kind of underlining that by, I've had several conversations recently with some folks, and sharing their experiences that I found eye-opening, and I won't, I won't go into a lot of detail, but the one person, the grandmother came to me and said she has, you know, her kids wanting to move back to Arvada, and feel like they can't, biracial family, and, and they don't feel welcome. And then, you know, you can ask the question, why is that? And I think some of the other stories I heard kind of helped amplify that, in that a woman of color shared with me that, when she goes out to jog, she's been, she's quite a jogger and a runner, and so am I, so we had a connection on that, and she shared with me that three times she's been stopped by the police, for just for jogging in a neighborhood. And I, as long as I've been jogging around, I've never had the police stop for me for jogging. And so, and then she also shared with me that she went to Westwoods to get golf clubs repaired, and waited and waited and waited, and never got service, while other people who were white got service. So those are things that I think we have to be leaning at, and so I appreciate us moving forward and being willing to ask those tough questions.
But I think we also don't lose sight of the other good things that are going on, because I have neighbors that are biracial, same-sex marriage, that live just down the street from me, and our community has accepted them arms wide open, they've been in my house several times, and so I think there are some circumstances, right? But I think we also have to look at, look for the good, and, and make sure that we're not, you know, pigeonholing ourselves in, in what's perceived as, as all the bad. We gotta, we have to look for the good as well, too. Yeah, I'm going to agree with David on this, because, you know, living in Candela's, it's, it's, a lot of non-Coloradoans live in Candela's, and a lot of East Coast, and a lot of diversity, and I have to agree, I, I, it is extremely, it's, it's great to see, like, our block party is just as diverse as you described it, and not, not one issue like that is elevated, and no one feels that way, and I ask those kind of questions of how they perceive the city, and I'm not getting that feedback from that area right now, I do agree to some, some areas, but we, we have to celebrate that diversity has come along